Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. We're going to give it a minute or so for people to join. So thank you for being patient. Thank you for being here. Just give it one second or one minute. All right, for the sake of time, we'll get started. I know people will be joining and that's great. And I know that we're still waiting for one candidate to join, but that's fine. We're going to be flexible. And she will join when she can. So welcome, everyone. We'll get started. Thank you for joining our one hour virtual Meet the Candidates session for candidates running for City Council District Three. So joining us today are Angelita Morillo, Jesse Cornet, Steve Novick, and then Tiffany Koyama Lane should be joining shortly. So we'll welcome Tiffany as soon as she gets here. I am the moderator for the session. My name is Ada Dorch, and I am the Director of Development and Advocacy with Impact Northwest. You can see here on the slide that this session is hosted by a number of Portland-area nonprofits doing great work in the community. Thank you all for being here. I see a few in the room. So let me read that out. A special thank you to Portland Tenants United, Blanche House, SEI, Northwest Pilot Project, Path Home Transition Projects, Our Just Future, William Temple House, the Welcome Home Coalition, and then of course us, main kind of sponsors of this event, Impact Northwest. It's important to notice and or know that as 501(c)(3) nonprofits, we don't endorse any candidate, but we do feel that civic engagement and advocating for the communities where we work is important. I want to give a, I'll talk a little bit about Impact Northwest and kind of set the stage about who we are as an organization for those who don't know in the room and also for the candidates and future elected officials. So Impact Northwest, our mission is to prevent homelessness. We're the largest organization in the region dedicated to this. That's a little bit of our mission, or mission vision there. So we serve around 27,000 people each year with services to help them stay housed and thrive in the long term. And we do that in two main ways, which you can see on the screen hopefully. So we provide stabilizing services so people remain in their homes. And then those services look like rental assistance and energy assistance and other basic needs. So people can, in crisis, get what they need to stay housed. And then we provide what we call strengthening services, and it's a bit more upstream support for households and families who are moving beyond crisis and need support such as academic enrichment, job readiness, and connections. So that's our approach to addressing the housing crisis. We've been around for 58 years. We know this approach works. And we're happy to give you more information if you'd like that about Impact Northwest. We know that, you know, these services alone won't solve our housing crisis, but advocacy will. And so that's a big driver for why we put on these Meet the Candidates sessions and our increased approach around advocacy. So my colleagues can add a link in the chat, hopefully, about our homelessness prevention strategy that's on our website. And hopefully, the candidates can, you can read a little bit more about that and hopefully are motivated to, when you create policy decisions around housing and homelessness, that you could look at this homelessness prevention strategy as inspiration. So with that, together with our partners, we want to stress the importance of housing plus services as a solution to the housing crisis in contract modernization that revamps the way the public sector contracts with nonprofits to provide housing services. So it's a long way of saying that we believe in housing plus services, housing-first approach. And we also believe that direct service workers, people who are providing the services that we all need to address the crisis are paid a housing wage. So with that, let's set the scene, and here's some ground rules here. And I will read them for you. So all participants are treated with respect, and we treat others with respect. Microphones are off. You've noticed that. We'll be asked to unmute once there's a Q and A section during that session. And then during the Q and A, you can use the chat for your questions, or you can raise your virtual hand, and I will, we will unmute you. And then lastly, the session is recorded. There is a group that's participating today, and thank you so much for being here. And we look forward to your questions. But it's also made available to be on our website because we know that many people come and view the recording later on. So thank you for being open to it being recorded today. All right, so logistics. Each candidate will have up to five minutes to speak. The remaining time will be opened up for questions to the audience. And then during that time, each candidate will have about a minute to respond to each question. And I would like to welcome all the candidates here. Did Tiffany join? Let's see if I see them in the... Do I see them? Sophia, do you? Looks like they're not here yet. Okay, that's fine. So let's, I'll call on you to speak again, five minutes. And we will go with Angelita first. I welcome you. Thank you, Angelita.
Thanks so much for having me, everybody. Good to see folks on Zoom and looking forward to hear from everybody. I would love if folks want to introduce themselves in the chat, maybe. I'd love to see who all is in the room. But yeah, my name is Angelita, or Angelita Morillo, for those of you that speak Spanish. I often joke that if you say in English, it's like Angelina Jolie, but with a T. So if that makes it a little easier for you. My family's originally from Paraguay. I moved to the United States when I was four years old. And I really love this city. And I, I went to college at Portland State University. And I think what a lot of folks may have heard about me at this point is that when I was in college, I was actually unhoused for about a year of my time there. So I was one of those people that I showered at the school gym. I, I was working full-time while also studying. And I was one of our unhoused people. That was very lucky, and I got taken in by a family who knew me in high school. And if it weren't for them, I certainly wouldn't have graduated college. I would not be doing anti-hunger policy work today, and I would not be running for office. So the work that you guys are doing for all of us is really crucial and important. And, you know, it has a near and dear place in my heart. I decided to run for office particularly when the City Council had a vote on mass encampments. And I knew a lot of unhoused people and advocates for unhoused people that had decided to not wait in line for a shelter bed that night in order to go testify in front of City Council about how these issues would impact them. And they waited for five hours in the testimony line at City Hall. They didn't get a shelter bed that night. And one of the commissioners actually allowed some developers and wealthy people to cut in line in front of the unhoused people that had signed up first. And so they didn't get a shelter bed that night, and they didn't get to testify. And to me, that was extremely unacceptable because I think regardless of who you are, where you come from, you deserve to have a voice at City Hall, and it's really important to me that we make that accessible to everyone. I, in my day job, I'm an anti-hunger policy advocate. I work with our most vulnerable communities in Oregon. So I work on SNAP, aka food stamps. And I have a lot of experience doing statewide community listening sessions, gathering feedback from community, turning that into policy that we push at the state legislature, and securing funding for it, which I think are all skills that are going to be really important in the new, in the new council because we are entering a really tight budget year. So I'm really interested in housing-first approaches as well. I'm interested in shelter models that are autonomous, like Right to Dream Two, where we have unhoused people that have a council and have a voice in how those spaces are organized. And I also think that the city needs to start looking at really creative and imaginative approaches towards housing, like using land trusts and making sure that we're changing zoning so that we can use every tool available to us to address our housing crisis. So that's a little bit about me and the things that I'm interested in. Looking forward to hearing all of your questions later on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angelita. And for Tiffany, I see that you joined. We are giving each candidate five minutes to speak, or up to five minutes. And then we'll open it up to question and answers where candidates will have one minute to respond. So I'll move on to the next candidate on my list, and that would be Jesse. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Going to set a timer for myself too, just to kind of have, keep an eye on where I'm at. I'm Jesse Cornet. I'm somebody that grew up poor and dealt with housing instability throughout my, throughout my youth. I've never actually said this in a forum before, but I was born in Alabama. I lived there, Florida, Michigan, Seattle, Texas, and Kentucky. And when I was 11, I moved back to Alabama. So that's how many moves I had just among different states. And, and housing instability within each of those as well. To a smaller extent as an adult here in Portland, but I don't really focus on that as much. I moved to Portland in 1995, managed to decide to go to college, got a master's degree from Portland State University, and I've worked most of the last two decades in the public policy process and electoral process here in Oregon and afar. Early in my career, I had some major legislative victories, helped modernize Oregon's campaign finance disclosure system, built buildings on the campus of PSU. I've worked in the business world. In both of the 2016 and 2020, I worked for Bernie Sanders campaigns. In 2020, I had the role colloquially known as Body Man, which meant that I traveled with Bernie anywhere he went for the last six months of the campaign. Quite literally, every moment he was outside of his house or his hotel room. I came back from that and immediately re-engaged in the civic process here, went to work with Oregon Latino Health Coalition and helped pass something called Cover All People. As a result of that work, 55,000 Oregonians today have access to healthcare who weren't previously covered. These are folks that would have been eligible for Medicaid except for their immigration status. So folks very much in need. I also started working with Oregon Recovers about that same time. And by day, I'm the Policy and Advocacy Director over there. When I talk about my vision for Portland, I start with talking about eradicating homelessness and our addiction crises. So just because we're on topic here, to talk about homelessness for just a quick minute. I am a candidate that will admit I'm taken aback that the week that ballots were mailed out, a majority of our current City Council, all of whom are running for office, decided with no alternate plan in place to remove the city from the joint office contract. I support the new council revisiting that as soon as we are in there. In terms of what we should be doing, these things, these are things that you all probably know better than me, but enhancing rental assistance, bolstering rental protections, rapid rehousing, creating more shelters, more safe rest villages, more task sites. These are all things that are listed on my website that I would like to do to address the homelessness crisis here. And on the website, cornetforportland.com, I also have several other planks. I won't get too much into it today, but since I also work for Oregon Recovers and understand the interconnectedness of these two issues, I think there's a lot of work that we have to do in terms of going back to the safe rest villages, shelters, and providing services to those in need to find their own journey to recovery. As a result of the work I've done over the long arc, I've been endorsed by more elected officials than any candidate running across the city, which is a pretty neat thing. Our own state representative here, Rob Nose, is a good one, Senator Lou Frederick, former Governor Ted Koolengoski, and teachers, firefighters, a whole lot of other folks. And I know you all don't endorse, and I am still proud to be here to talk about one of the most pressing issues in our city. And thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Jesse. I will pass it now to Steve.
Hi, thanks so much for having us here. I'm Steve Novick. I'm an environmental lawyer for the state of Oregon. Thirty years ago, as an environmental lawyer for the Federal Justice Department, and I took 22 years off in between to be involved in politics and public policy in Oregon, including being in the City Council for four years, where probably the most significant contribution I made to housing-related issues was that I was the first person in the council to talk about the importance of allowing more forms of housing in places where they previously have been illegal, like allowing middle housing duplexes and triplexes in single-family zones, which later, of course, the governor took up when she was Speaker, and that's now the law. I am running in part because I feel like in a brand-new council, it'll be useful to have some people with not just experience getting things done in City Hall, but the humility that comes with experience. I know that I don't have any grand new plan that's a silver bullet to solve homelessness or any other problem. I think I'm reasonably good at asking questions and trying to identify what practical steps the city can do to move the ball. I, but obviously, welcome your feedback on this. And I hope, I mean, if I happen to win, I hope this conversation will lay the groundwork for other conversations we'll have after November 5th. But it does seem like the tiny house villages are successful, both in terms of outcomes and in terms of people being willing to go to places where they have a door to close. And so they have safety and privacy. So my inclination has been to think that the city should and the county should do more to expand that model. I was told by people at the, in City Hall that it's hard to do too much of that because it's hard to find sites for such things. But I was told by somebody else I have in the city that they haven't really professionalized the process of looking for sites. It's being done like in their spare time by political staff. So one thing you might consider is hire a few people who that's their whole job is to look for sites. I'd be curious as to your thoughts about that. One specific question I asked was, the city does own some big plots of land known as golf courses. And I asked, have you considered using some of those if you're short on space? And the answer I got from City Hall was, well, we looked at that, and the topography doesn't work, we were told. There's too many slopes. And then I talked to Rob Justice, you know, as a major builder, ran down, and he's like, that's ridiculous. That I build on slopes all the time, and I can think of three publicly-owned golf courses that are worth looking at. So that's one specific issue I want to pursue unless people come up with other ideas of where we could cite such things. I, another thing, the thing that I've heard is that in terms of just building more affordable housing, I've heard from the nonprofit Affordable Housing Community that one way the city could help is to work with its own staff and with staff at Metro, the state, the feds, if possible, to talk about reducing the number of requirements they have to jump through when they're pulling together funding from various sources and harmonizing those requirements. So it's not like they have to deal with 60 different requirements from three different governments, which adds to difficulty and expense. There are, oh, another thing that I've heard on the campaign trail from homeless folks is that one issue that folks have with the police is that if there's violence in a homeless community, the police assume that it's all within the homeless community and sort of designate a community as, well, it's gang-ridden. Whereas in fact, sometimes they're being attacked by people from outside the community. And so I'd like to work with homeless folks and the police to try to make sure that people are making that, that kind of distinction. One question I have for you, and maybe probably we can't answer this until, until after November 5th, is, and I should have initiated this conversation before, is when it comes to rent assistance, I've heard the argument that it's difficult to tell who exactly is about to fall into homelessness. There's many thousands of people who are at risk, but you can't tell exactly who will fall in. So providing rent assistance to everybody at risk of homelessness would cost hundreds of millions of dollars a year. And if you're not doing that, you might be sort of, you're helping with a limited supply of housing, with a housing shortage, there's going to be some people who fall into homelessness. Unless you're trying to help everybody, you're simply weighting the scales on some rather than others. So I'm curious about what you have to say about how targeted rent assistance can be and what your response to that argument is. So I'll close there.
Thank you, Steve, and thanks for your questions too. So hopefully, we can get to those as well. And there's some meetings on the executive directors of nonprofits and direct service workers on the call. So hopefully, they can give some insight into that question later. So I will pass it off to you, Tiffany. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for putting this on. I'm so excited to be here. Thank you for being flexible. I'm sorry that I was a little late. My name is Tiffany Koyama Lane. My pronouns are she/her. I have been a public school teacher. I'm in my 16th year. I've taught every grade kindergarten through fifth grade and currently teach third grade at Sunnyside Environmental School. I see some cheering, yay, for teachers or Sunnyside or both. I'm a mom. I have a seven-year-old and nine-year-old who attend Portland Public Schools. I'm a community organizer. I am a leader among the teachers' union. I'm also a yonsei. I'm fourth-generation Japanese-American. And part, huge piece of why I'm running is because I see how these challenges that we're all talking about, I see them show up in my third-grade classroom. In my third-grade classroom, I've had students bring their dirty laundry with them into school because they don't have access to a washer dryer. In my third-grade classroom, I've seen families lose their housing in the middle of the year. I know that while I'm talking specifically about things I've seen in my classroom, you all know these are things that we're dealing with citywide. I have also seen really close up in my own neighborhood, in the schools I've worked at in Portland, it's been Fabian and Sunnyside Environmental School. I see how your organizations really make a difference. I actually have had a homeless senior in my, who lived in my neighborhood for 20 years unhoused. And he is, was able to get real permanent housing through the Northwest Pilot Project. So I'll say that that program will always have a very special place in my heart. That person is still, still in housing and gets support through you all. My vision for Portland is a safe, housed, connected Portland, where everyone is able to access what they need. And when I talk about safety, I'm talking about safety for everyone, for those who are housed and unhoused. I know that we need to be doing a lot to get folks into housing and also to keep people in housing. I also know that there are bottlenecks to getting services in our city and that you all are the ones that see that up close, and you are able to uniquely identify where those bottlenecks are. I know that we need to be working closer with the county, not farther away. We need to do as much as we can to be desiloing the work that we're doing. And in addition, we need to be working closer with you all. I am always going to lean on the people with the expertise and who are community-facing and are on the ground doing the work. And I know that you all are those people. Yeah, I mentioned I am fourth-generation Japanese-American. I am very proud of that. It also means that my family during World War II was forced into the World War II incarceration camps. And it's pretty common in the Japanese community that my, like, folks didn't really want to talk about it much. But from what my grandma and great-grandma would share for me, it was clear that not only was their farmland and their home taken, but also their dignity and their livelihood. And I do believe it roots me in one of my biggest, deepest values, which is that everyone is deserving of dignity. Yeah, and also when they got out of those camps, they were able to rebuild on farmland. But that was because they worked together with other Japanese-American families to do that. And they shared a plot of land and farm together. And it also, I think, is part of why I carry so much hope. I know that we can come together. I know that we can rebuild. I feel really hopeful about this new form of government. I mean, like, all the city councilors in this, this meeting right now, like, I've heard them all share great things, and we all already are doing things to be collaborative. And I think, from what I've heard, that's pretty rare to see on the campaign trail. So I want to just share that hope, that I think that we're already seeing improvements in the way that, the direction that things are going in how it already feels on the campaign trail. I am someone that brings a lot of hope. I will say, though, if anyone's been a public school educator, you know that you don't really have the luxury of not having some hope. You got to dig deep and find that in order to keep doing your job at times. And I hope that I can bring some of that positive energy here, and I'm so excited to work with you all.
Thank you so much. Thanks to all of you, and thank you for staying within your time. It's awesome. I would now like to open it up for questions. So if you have a question, please feel free to add it in the chat, or you can raise your virtual hand. Sometimes it's hard to find where that is, but under the toolbar in the Zoom meeting, it's under reactions, I believe. Yes, and you can raise your hand there. And I see you as well. So you can raise your real hand if you want. Yeah, please ask your questions. RJ, I will unmute you. Go ahead.
Thank you, everyone. I like to just get a sense of Portland has about a 50/50. It's like 53 to 47 split between homeowner versus renter. Could each one of you just identify if you're currently a renter or a homeowner?
Renter.
Renter.
Homeowner.
I am, by fluke, I am both.
Thank you. RJ, did you have a follow-up question or clarification on your question, or you got what you?
No, I just like to see, I believe that there should be a diversity in our representation. And I sometimes feel like homeownership tends to be the ones that are able to be in our system. And I'm grateful to hear that we have a bunch of renters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your question. All right, any others, any other questions, please ask away.
Can I just expand on that a little bit as well? Yeah, because I do think that's really important, RJ. I'm a renter. I was raised by a single mother who was an immigrant. So we, you know, she's a lifelong renter as well, and I've seen the impacts of her not having a college education within the United States and really being on that marginalized frontline. As far as, I'm 28 years old now, and I'm thinking about how I'm going to take care of my mother as she's aging and can't afford a home long-term, right? So I really appreciate that you brought that perspective. And I think as someone who is Latino, who was raised in a Latino family, we've also faced renter discrimination within Portland. We had our rents illegally raised in an apartment building. But at the time, I was in high school, and my mom didn't know that there are limits to how much your rent is able to be raised. And so we found out years later that they were pushing Latinos out of that apartment building by illegally raising our rents past the limit. And those are things that I care about very deeply because I saw how it displaced my own family, but also because I see that that's an ongoing issue in Portland. The fact that most people who are Black, Latino, or Indigenous can't afford a single-two-bedroom apartment in, on the median income for those demographics is something that we really have to address. So I just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging that there is a disproportionate amount of homeowner perspective on City Council and why it's important to have a diversity of voices.
Thank you. And just to be fair to the other candidates, would anyone else like a minute to respond as well? Elaborate on anything? Want to make sure you have a chance?
I, I just, I just want to say, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree. As somebody that has paid attention to city politics over a very long arc, I know that having Chloe Daley as a renter on the City Council made a huge difference in raising the issue. You know, somebody that had been a renter for, I think, her entire life when she was elected. Having somebody with that perspective really changed the conversation. And we have some of the protections that we have under ordinance now only as a result of that lived experience being represented on the council.
Thank you. And Tiffany, I think you saw your head nodding if you want to respond as well.
I see Steve just unmuted. You want to go first?
Sure. So I just wanted to mention that I was a homeowner from 2012 to 2020. And by the time my ex-wife and I sold our house, we couldn't, even though we both made a good, good money, neither, we couldn't have afforded the house, to buy the house in 2020. And I think that that's a mess. I think that's probably true of most homeowners in Portland. They could not afford to buy their own house now if they had to. So I'd like to see that as like more of a talking point in discussions about homelessness. When people think that, well, just because you made bad choices in your life, I think, like to hear people saying, well, wait a minute, you wouldn't be able to afford your own house. So if you've seen that kind of change, then what about people who never owned houses and maybe could have afforded rent 10 years ago but can't now?
Yeah, I heard a
Yeah, I heard a lot of great things that I want to echo and add on to. I spent um, about a decade being a renter and know what that burden can feel like. And um, as you're, as someone had mentioned, we have about fifty percent of Portlanders that are renters and oftentimes are not represented. I know um, Anhaletha and I have spent time with the advocacy group PDxRenter Power and who's already talking about how we can be giving power to renters and have signed on to the idea of a renter's bill of rights that just have some common sense protections that many other cities already offer, such as if you have outstanding code violations, if there's a bunch of mold in your building that your rent can't be hiked up. Um, I'm always going to know that the people closest to the challenge, closest to the pain are going to be closest to the solution also and need to be part of the conversation and need to be at the table and also need to be closest to the power too.
Great, thank you. And a question in the chat. Are you endorsing a particular mayoral candidate? And how do you see their vision aligning with your goals for District Three and the city as a whole? Who would like to answer that one first?
My answer is I'm pretty darn confused and actually um, I would like to ask the folks in this call to email me at stevedovik96@gmail.com after this call to give me your thoughts specifically about Keith Wilson. Cause at this point, I mean, I don't want Renee Gonzalez. I think Carmen Rubio is too damaged to have a chance of winning. And my question for you is, is Wilson so naive and misguided in his thoughts on homelessness that we shouldn't rank him either? Um, I'm kind of thinking that it might make sense to support Lee Vostis, who perceives the role of the mayor as being largely a cheerleader, which it could turn into in this system of government. Maybe that, maybe that's preferable to somebody who um, either can't win or doesn't um, have a vision that makes any sense. Um, I also have to confess that for those of you who remember the Ronald Reagan movie, Newton Rocky, Rocky All-American, I'm really hoping that at some point Lee Vostis will release a video of himself giving the Newt Rockne speech and saying it's time to go out there and win just one for the stripper. Uh, but I'm not holding my breath.
Jesse, I think you were next. Go ahead.
Oh, Steve, I'm sure if you shared that idea with her, she would deploy it. So that seems right up her uh, right up her alley. So I'm uh, I have proudly endorsed Carmen Rubio, um, as I did her city council race. Uh, when I look at this mayoral pool, there's just nobody else that has what I think is the experience necessary to do this job. The city of Portland is under a time of, 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 of massive transformation. Um, and having somebody there that doesn't care about flash, but getting the job done and has the experience within the city. Um, as well as the compassion necessary to ensure those in our city who need to be cared for the most are cared for. Uh, that comes, only one name comes up. Uh, and that's Carmen Rubio. Um, I will just acknowledge that uh, if we were uh, conducting a job interview for somebody to be the mayor's driver, uh, I would not hire her, but that's not the job. It's to lead the city and she's proven capable. And uh, this is a distraction from the fact that she's capable and compassionate.
Thank you. Tiffany, would you like to go next?
Sure. I get this question multiple times a day. I think a lot of folks are feeling confused, a little overwhelmed. Um, I usually, when people ask me, I honor that and say that I understand why there's confusion. I understand if people have certain lines that, you know, they just can't vote for someone. I do, I do say, don't rank Renee. I can say that with confidence. Um, policy-wise, if you were just to look, you know, hold up policies, Carmen is who I am most aligned with. And what I can say, um, I like to sometimes, you know, speak personally, locally, immediately is I can share that from the moment I launched my campaign about it, you know, over about a year ago, um, Carmen has been supportive, has been um, collaborative, has, uh, we've had positive meetings together, has pulled me aside before other, like now many people want to pull me aside because they see how well I can fundraise, but even before that was pulling me aside and saying, I see you. I see Anhaletha. I see you women of color, like doing this, keep going. I need you in office with me. And so, you know, I understand people will read what they read and need to make their own decisions. That's something that I can share that I felt genuinely from her is that support. And I, I will say something else that sticks out for me is I see many photos, uh, you know, of like her doing her work at the city and I'm oftentimes like, wow, it is her. And then just like a bunch of suits. She's around a lot of um, people that don't look like her. And so I think about how how challenging that might be at times.
Yeah, thank you for that Tiffany. Um, I agree. I think, uh, you know, I worked in Joanne Hardesty's office when she was on council. I was there for three years. I did constituent services and tribal relations policy. And um, I think it is really challenging being uh, for her, it was hard being, watching her be the sole black woman on city council. Um, and I think it makes a difference when people understand your perspectives. Not that anyone's a monolith, right? Me and Renee are both Latino and we don't agree on many, many things. Um, but I think as far as the mayoral race goes, I have reservations about almost all of the candidates, if I can be frank here. Um, I, I really like Carmen. Um, we have a great relationship. I think she is actually the most effective person who has done the most despite the fact that her colleagues have uh, tried to impede many of the policies that she's trying to pass because um, in my opinion, they were concerned about her having some major successes before running for office uh, for the mayoral race. Um, I have deep concerns about her climate policies uh, and Zenith. Particularly, I think that permitting process was deeply concerning to me and the fact that uh, oil companies had some uh, private backend meetings with Carmen and uh, Dan Ryan and that they got their way uh, is concerning to me. However, I think that she is going to be the most effective person. I think she is wonderful at collaborating with lots of different kinds of people and that means a lot to me. Um, I had breakfast with Keith. I think he's a, a very, I think as hard as in the right place. I think he uh, would be a lovely person to work with. Um, I have concerns about the fact that it seems like his policy may be more geared towards hiding homelessness than resolving it by getting people into long-term housing. And uh, I don't care for aesthetic solutions that are not going to get people into long-term housing. That's not a priority for me. Um, and I think leave is great. Uh, I think we would get along. Sorry. Uh, yes. So I think anyone but Renee really, I think we'll be able to work with everybody and, and lead us into a better future.
Thank you. And we're still opening it up for questions. So if you have your questions, please put in the chat or raise your hand. And also for the candidates, thank you, um, Jesse, for putting your contact in there. So other candidates, if you want to put yours contacts in the chat for folks, that would be great as well.
Steve put his email verbally, so I was just trying to one-up him.
Oh, did he? Okay. Sorry, I missed it.
No, no. Seemed like a good idea.
I put my chat too.
Thank you. Thanks for being proactive. It looks like there is a question in here from Mike. Mike, do you want to unmute and ask it or you want me to read it?
Um, sure, sure. I, I just wanted to ask the candidates, we mentioned this earlier about the importance of um, making sure that our frontline staff um, in our partner nonprofits are getting paid a real living wage. Um, in Portland, I think the latest on that could be somewhere around thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three dollars. Um, I'm just wondering, you know, um, updating, modernizing the contracts, especially that specific issue. How will you support this initiative uh, upon winning your race? And getting into office?
Thank you. Let's start with Anhaletha. I'm going to go ahead and answer.
Yeah, thank you for this question, Mike. Uh, this is so crucial and important. I'm an anti-hunger policy advocate in my day job and, and we are a tiny nonprofit with uh, I think eight, eight or nine people, if I recall correctly. Um, and we don't have a lot of money. And so our co-executive director, directors actually made the decision to take a little bit less pay in order to pay all of our frontline staff, including myself, a living, uh, a living wage in Portland. And I have seen the difference that it has made in my life. It has also um, allows us to stay in that work long-term so that we can build those relationships, cultivate that knowledge uh, long-term. And uh, so I think it's really important. I think from what I saw of the budget meeting last, uh, just yesterday, it sounds like we are going to be in a really horrifically difficult budget time. Um, so to me, I think that's going to mean reallocating funding from spaces where it's not being used. I would say, you know, for the past eight years, we have not been able to hire the police officer positions that have been filled with money waiting to be used for the ba, for the past uh, eight years. So if we can't fill those positions, maybe we need to take that money and fully fund Portland Street response or uh, you know, make sure that folks in other areas are being paid more.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Tiffany, there you go.
Thank you so much for this question. I think it's a really important one. It's something that I have been talking about on the campaign trail because my neighbor that I spoke about. Um, who got support from the Northwest Pilot Project. I know that the housing navigator that he was working with was ha, had a huge caseload and also had shared that she has to work ex, an extra job to pay some of um, her bills. So I also have heard from an organization that having a fee-for-service model from JOHS would be a lot better than reimbursement, which just makes sense that it would give an organization a lot more stability. Um, I heard about an organization that shared that at one point JOHS owed them one million dollars and they had to actually borrow from another organization. I think most people can agree that's that's not working great. I know that that type of instability can contribute to staffing issues, to burnout. Um, and I mean, I think it, it comes down to also listening to your expertise and really talking to the people that are on the ground and um, listening and also taking those pieces and putting them into action. And oh, I'm sorry, I might've gone over ten seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse, would you like to go next?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, I work by day as the um, uh, policy and advocacy director. I don't know, I had to think to remember my job title for Oregon Recovers and uh, we're, you know, we're seeing the same thing in the addiction fields. Um, and um, I, 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 I think that um, everyone, um, I'll, I'll start by saying that uh, what they said, and so to not belabor any of those points. Um, I'll just add that when it is uh, uh, when you're getting paid the same or potentially just a little bit more to work at Chick-fil-A and you're able to leave those worries, you know, and don't have to think about the trauma of what might've happened in your workday. Uh, when you walk out of the door and take off that uniform, uh, it, it, it's making it harder and harder for folks to, to work in uh, fields where we desperately need them the most right now.
I um, I think this is more sort of a question for the city in its discussions with the county about the joint office, because I don't see the city on its own coming up with a bunch, I mean, the city on its own isn't making unilateral decisions about payments to service providers. My default is you shouldn't ask people to do incredibly difficult jobs or any jobs without being paid a living, living wage. Um, I think that I'd be curious as to what you would say about what kind of discussion we would have about what the trade-offs are. Um, if paying people a living wage means that we provide fewer services to fewer people, uh, that might actually be the principal decision to make. Um, but we'd have to be, you know, transparent with the, with the public about it. Um, so um, on the other hand, you mean, you think it could be that, you know, there's so many people that aren't being served because we got higher enough people that actually you expand the number of people served by raising, by raising salaries. So I don't know the answer to those questions and I again, would like to hear your thoughts on it.
Thank you. I think what we're saying from an Impact Northwest perspective, and I don't want to speak for all nonprofits, but it is the fact that direct service workers are not paid a housing wage, so they themselves are housing insecure. And so what we're hoping for is that one of you, some of you may be elected um, into city council. And if you are to think critically, self-reflect, ask those good questions, involve nonprofits into the decision-making so that those direct service workers can afford to live in an apartment and not be afraid of um, being evicted or losing it. Or the, doing the critical work that the government actually truly relies on us to provide. So that's what we're coming at. But um, yeah, so I think definitely involving us in, in um, engaging in the nonprofit sector as you make those decisions would be very much welcomed and we're here to be a resource for you all. I will move on to Michael. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Thanks, Michael.
Thanks Ada. And candidates, thank you so much for coming here and uh, interacting with Impact Northwest and showing your support for our mission to keep people in housing. This is such a valuable organization. Um, really quickly following on that last point, uh, policies are great, but they're only uh, as valuable as uh, and only as effective as the people who are implementing those policies. Taking care of those people uh, is essential to making a difference. My question is going back to a, a proposal uh, that Steve made and I'd like to hear Steve's responses and other candidates. Uh, we've heard this before. Uh, the parks of Portland are one of our city's greatest treasures. Those parks encompass a lot of facilities, yes, including golf courses. Um, Steve and several others have suggested the possibility of using large open space in the city, like our golf courses uh, for enabling housing and have also suggested uh, that we reduce the uh, number of restrictions on the creation of that housing in order to uh, quickly solve the problem. I'd like to hear you talk about how that solution that you're proposing, how you would ensure that the city gets fair value for any property, any public property that we are enabling private developers to take action on. How that, that you would ensure that the housing on those properties uh, is sustainable and long-term and part of a long-term plan in the city? And is not just a, an effort to solve a problem within four-year terms. And you know, one thing, um, it really resonates with me is that when you talk about proposals like that, it sounds very similar to Donald Trump's proposals to uh, open up BLM land and park service land for private uh, for private usages uh, with fewer restrictions. We've heard a lot of talk about that in the debates. Uh, I'd like you, I'd like to hear from, from you, Steve, and from everybody about how your policies differ from the Donald Trump approach for uh, allowing private developers to use public resources to solve perceived problems.
Well, first of all, I'm not talking about selling the golf courses to private developers. I'm talking about them remaining in public hands and using them temporarily as sites for tiny house villages. Um, I prefer not to use open space, but if we're going to use open space, then open space that currently is reserved for a small segment of society with a larger amount of acreage per person than any other sport in existence, um, this does, does not strike me as unreasonable. I've heard some people say that, I've heard some golf enthusiasts respond to what I said by saying, well, can't you just use big box doors? There's so many empty ones. And so I'm curious about your thoughts on that. My impression is that it's really not that simple. So my thought was really, if space is at a premium, if we can't find places, we should look at land that the city already owns and the golf courses are rather large plots of land um, that the city owns. Um, so that actually, and as far as Donald Trump is concerned, since Donald Trump is, the only thing that we know that Donald Trump really loves is golf. Hmm, I think that an anti-golf stance is inherently an anti-Trump stance.
Thank you. Um, Michael, it looks like, could you put that question in the chat as well? Might be a little bit easier for some folks, it sounds like, to be able to read it.
Also, by the way, Anhaletha agrees with me on this. So as we, both of us have said before, responding to potential opposition from golfers, if I'm going down on this, she's going down with me.
Yeah, on that note, uh, Michael, I think you directly sent it to me, but not to the whole chat. Uh, it's not letting me send your, the thing that you typed out to the whole chat, I think. Uh, but I, I think that, yeah, it was misunderstood. Um, I'm particularly interested in using public land to create public housing development. Um, Seattle just passed a measure to create public housing. Um, obviously I think that's going to be a more long-term goal. Uh, I think, you know, it's not going to be implemented for about six years. But the reality is that I think that we need housing that is not market dependent. Because when we do leave it just up to the market, it fluctuates too much for the average renter. And the fact that when I first moved to Portland, my mom was able to rent a two-bedroom apartment uh, for twelve hundred a month. And now my one-bedroom tiny apartment is seventeen hundred a month is not sustainable. Um, I think as far as the golf courses go, I'm fine with that. There's only one golf course in Portland that is a natural habitat. The others are not. Um, golf courses are Golf courses are also not sustainable for the environment. They're pretty bad for it actually. And if we need to create public housing, then I think that that's something that is a resource that we have. But the city of Portland also owns lots of, lots of, many lots of land that are not golf courses, if that is of concern to you.
Thank you. Tiffany, Jesse, would you like to go next?
I mean, I love hearing Stephen Angelita talk about this. One thing that I love as a community organizer and a public school educator is just the idea of being willing to put a lot of ideas out and brainstorm. So I am okay with not necessarily knowing every single step along the way, but also knowing that I can trust people that have dedicated their careers to this. So I, just in the last week, door knocked the house of Helmy, who's running the Portland's Housing Bureau. And we ended up talking for an hour and just hearing, you know, telling her about different ideas about social housing, about non-market housing, about how to move away from, you know, profit motive being the center of things. I, I learned so much in just an hour and she was like, I could, we could talk for forever about this. So I know that there are experts that I will lean on. I'm okay with being a bit of a generalist in a lot of different areas and know that, you know, sometimes it's harder, it can be hard to actually execute big ideas. But I also see the importance of being willing to throw, throw some of those big ideas out there as starting points for inspiration and, you know, things that can actually be set into motion.
Thank you. Jesse, would you like to?
So this has come up a lot when I'm at events with Angelita and Steve and I generally kept quiet. They're, they're two strong candidates who I generally agree with on most things. This is an area that, that I don't, I think, picking on golfers and golf courses as a, it's a fun and easy target and I, I respect that. But at the end of the day, they are green spaces. When I've talked about the why me running for office, I have many times said that we don't lack the solutions. You guys don't need to, we don't need to elect the best idea generators out there. That's not the job of elected officials. We've never lacked the solutions in our cities, in our city. We've lacked the political will. And so I am at times willing to disagree with folks that I generally agree with and respect as well. And this is one of those. I, I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a quick fix and easy targets and doesn't actually get to the root of the problem.
Well, Jesse, I need to respond to that because what I was responding to is people at city hall saying it's really hard to find locations for these tiny house villages. There's a limit to how many we could do. And so my question was, where have you done as much as you can to identify possible locations? So if you have an idea of like 30 places in the city where we could put tiny house villages and put, include more of them than, than the golf courses, then I'd like to hear it. I'm not saying I'm against golfers and Angelina and I have both been very clear about this. I have nothing against golf. I have nothing against publicly owned golf courses, but we do not have a golf crisis in this city. We do have a homelessness crisis. So if we're having a hard time finding locations for the tiny house villages, it's something I think needs to be considered. Unless somebody else has an obvious idea that won't offend anybody.
And by the way, just so folks know in terms of how we're, we're going to, we're going to govern, Steve, I thank you for the, the point of clarification there. At the, as if this comes before city council, I'm not here saying that I'm a no vote on this. I'm here today saying like, eh, I don't see this. But Steve is right. We are in a crisis. So, and so when push comes to shove, is this an option? I would consider yes, but today, eh.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. Also, for sake of time, I'm going to move on to Andy Miller. You have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know that we have time to answer this question, but I want to piggyback on something Jesse said. Thank you. I, I agree that it's not a lack of solutions. I think if you come to any one of the organizations represented on this call, you'll see success every day. I think it is a lack of systems building. We have not really built a housing and homeless response system. We've built a set of initiatives and knew more of them and a proliferation of them are not going to solve the problem. And in fact, I would say each of those initiatives are rowing in a different direction. The city's trying on one hand to move everybody into more sheltered homelessness. The county's trying to house folks. The city's building housing, but not necessarily for folks who are unsheltered. For the vast majority, they're not. We're not, as providers, we often feel like we're not functioning as a system and we're hearing from candidates. You know, well, we're going to shelter everybody first. That's the next, that's the next project. That's not what we're doing now. And it's not what providers are saying we need to be doing. So I guess my question is, how would you go about building a functional system, particularly across ideological lines? And across theories of change lines and mission lines. Again, we hear some candidates are talking about homelessness through a lens of drug addiction and criminality. Others are talking about it as a housing shortage. We're not going to get everyone, given how many city, people will be on city council and throwing the county commission, metro and the state, all on the exact same page. So I'm more interested, not just, I'm interested in what page you're on, but I'm also interested in how you'll work with folks who maybe aren't on the same page or trying to solve a different problem than you to actually build a coherent system.
Thank you, Andy. Let's give about 30 seconds, 45 seconds to each candidate for an answer. Angelita, would you like to go first?
30 seconds for the hardest question in the world. I mean, I think, you know, I work with state legislators who are Republicans. I'm an anti-hunger policy advocate. Obviously, we don't agree on things. I think it's important to build relationships with people outside of work because of that. I, I think at the, at the end of the day, I'm going to be a data-driven city council member. And that means that if we're looking at what is causing the highest amounts of homelessness in Portland, it is the lack of affordability within Portland. I also think that I'm not going to give credence necessarily to people that are spreading that are painting our houseless population as purely a criminal population. I don't think that that is okay to give into the same way I wouldn't if someone was spreading misinformation about Latinos or other groups of people, right? So I think we can work together and also draw certain lines about who we prioritize and how we're going to serve.
Thank you. Tiffany, would you like to go next?
Yes, I'd love more than 30 seconds for this. This is my favorite question because as we have been doing this, we've gotten to have some different trainings. One of them was with Mike Johnson from the city. They brought together a bunch of city administrators from all over the country that had helped flip their form, city's form of government into this type. And they said that they, the number one thing you need are people that are really collaborative and know how to bring people together. That's something that I do with my own classroom. It's something that I'm already doing on the campaign trail. I'm someone who, you know, has like school board members donating to my campaign and district management and union members. I really believe that you can put all of your values on the table and build a Venn diagram. Talk about where the shared, where things overlap and start from there and move forward. And that's what I hope to do on city council.
Thank you, Tiffany. Steve?
So my sort of big picture assumptions are that as long as we have a huge housing shortage, we are going to have a number of folks who are homeless. And addressing the housing shortage is difficult because it involves a lot of things outside of our control, like interest rates. And it will take time. So my assumption is that we're going to have to admit that we're going to have a significant homelessness problem for a significant period of time. So even though it is primarily a housing problem, there is a short-term and actually intermediate term need for more shelter. So I, if somebody comes in and says, here's the plan with existing resources to house everybody in the next five years. That's great. I just don't think that that's feasible. I mean, what I'd like to see more of is people presenting plans of, okay, if we were really going to do this, what would it cost? Like in the Bay Area, they were talking about a $20 billion housing bond. Is that what we really need? I'd like to know how many people really probably should get rent assistance and how much would that be? Would that be $4 billion a year? I have not seen, except to some extent from PSU, that kind of explanation of, okay, if we really need it, here's what it costs.
Thank you, Steve. Jesse?
Sure. Can I just, since we're trying to do 30 seconds, can I summarize that? What I, I heard here is just how do you work collaboratively with folks? So I, I'll just point to Cover All People, which I helped pass in 2021. SEIU, which I assume all of you are aware with on one side and the Oregon Association of Nurseries on the other, conservative business interests, 75 total organizations came together to support this particular measure, which provided healthcare for those who weren't in our country, who, who lacked the legal status in our country. And I think that's just a testament to what I've done throughout my career. I, I say it in a way like this, and I mean it pretty seriously when I say that, that I employ a strategy of, of being a human being and making sure you're having those tough conversations, that you're engaging with people that you may not agree with, that you're respecting the differences in opinion on matters. So that's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you. There's definitely a couple comments in the chat that I'll let people read on their own, but we're at time. So I want to thank you all for your great questions and your engagement to the candidates. Thank you so much for accepting this invite, for showing up and, you know, giving us the time and talking to us about your opinions and your platform. So thank you so much again. And this recording will be made available on Impact Northwest's website. And we look forward to collaborating with you in the future. Thank you all.